Okay, good evening, everybody. This is meeting number 11. It's June 4th, 2018. It is 5:30 PM. We are in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Meeting number 11 is now called to order. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, can we give a roll call, please?
Wilson?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Graham Murray?
McCambe?
Here.
Rinker?
Aye, here.
Okay. We've got Mayor's Awards tonight, and we will be rolling downhill. These first two awards that I'm giving out go to two gentlemen that were quick to be of assistance. When the call went out, they answered the call, and they also went above and beyond, as far as I'm concerned. And I don't care what anybody says. I know that I took some flak from some people. The mayor shit went on Fireball Run. Well, it's too late. I already went on Fireball Run. I'm back from it, so I don't know what else to say about that. But I did the best I could for Burlington, and what really made this gig work was the vehicle that we were given to use for that. And that was two gentlemen that I'm really excited to give two awards to tonight, and I just want to thank you guys for showing up. The hot-cold, you know, the hot-cold in the seat, that's what really set it off, my friends. I was thinking, oh, Lord, for you both. Anyways, I'm gonna read them both, and I'll just have you guys come up and have a word. "Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being Model Burlingtonians. Your generosity, your flexibility, and your support for Fireball Run and the mayor's back is commendable, and I salute you. People like you help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On June 4th, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to Mr. Troy Patterson and Mr. Doug Owens. Come on down." That one is for you, sir.
All right.
That one is for you, sir. Let me give you this first.
All right.
And let me give you... There you go.
All right, thanks.
Do you want to take a picture?
Oh, yeah.
It's okay. This is gonna totally ruin you guys. I'm gonna put this on the face. Hey, we're gonna ask you guys to have a word, please.
Oh, yeah.
I'm asking you to use the microphone. Because the camera's gonna be facing you, facing us.
Can we go this way?
Yes, please, please. Everybody else has to see the back of your head, but at least they'll be...
It's always funny. I always wonder why Troy has me comes to these things.
He's good. He's good.
Well, no, you know, as large a group as we are, we get presented opportunities all the time to do stuff. And part of our role, I guess, as a big company, is giving back to the community. And I can tell you, it was really cool when Fireball Run was here filming that, and to come, you know, we came and we watched that, and to see the community come out, you know, all types of people, all sizes, all shapes, all colors, all everything. People are proud of their community, and it made us proud to be a part of this community also, and to be able to help out like we could. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Please hold the line.
I will say one thing.
Oh, okay.
I will say, when we came to that meeting, that event that night at the pizzazz, you know, we got to meet a lot of the people, sat and talked with them, and, you know, I don't think it would've mattered what city we were in, they would've talked about Shane McCambe. And they thought highly of you, so you did very well representing our city on that whole endeavor.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Just for the record, I did not pay Troy to say that, but I am gonna send him a little money. All right. Next, we have... Wow, what an awesome group tonight. Just fantastic people. This gentleman I've known for quite a few years, and he's also helped me in more ways than one, but I got to experience something that he did just the other day that really showed his kind heart, and I was just impressed, and I had to take the time to recognize this. So, glad to be giving this one out tonight as well. You know what you did, and you know how you helped and changed somebody's life, so glad to give this out. "On behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a Model Burlingtonian. Your caring heart, your thoughtfulness, and your commitment to your Lord and Savior is a blessing to many in this town. People like you help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On June 4th, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to Thomas Rexroth. Come on down." I see you brought your lovely wife with you.
Yeah. Yeah, I agreed to share this because it's an encouragement to everyone that hears the story, in that often, I think we all impress... We get impressed on us that we're supposed to do something, and sometimes we try to talk our way out of it, or we make excuses, or we fear, you know, some embarrassment, or something like this. But this particular time, you know, I went for it, and it turned out well, in that I was down at the library watching my two-year-old granddaughter participate in wiggle time. And it's kind of fun to see two-year-olds interact with each other. So after it was over, I decided to turn right coming out of the library and go up the hill and go home through the residential area instead of what I usually do is go bluff road and home. And as I drove by North Hill Park, I noticed a young lady sitting in a swing with a jacket on and a hood up over the top of her head, and as I drove past, I felt a prompting that I was supposed to go back and talk to her. And it was strong enough that I immediately turned around and went back and parked my car, went up to her, and said, "Do you have a minute?" She says, "Yeah," kind of cautiously. And I said, "God wants you to know that he loves you, and he has a great plan for your life." And she said, "Okay." And then I wanted to make sure that she was a born-again Christian, so I said, "Is it okay if I ask you a couple of rather personal questions?" And she says, "Okay." And I said, "If you were to die today, do you know for sure you'd go to heaven?" And she says, "Yeah, I think I would." I said, "Great. Bible says we can know." And I said, "The second question is, if you did go to heaven, and God says, 'Why should I let you into my heaven,' what would you tell him?" And she said, "Well, about seven years ago, I prayed to receive Christ as my Savior." I said, "Great. I'm your Christian brother." And I said, "God's got some miracles for you, so watch for him. You're very special to him." So I felt that I had done what I was supposed to do, so I left. And about halfway to my car, I felt impressed that I was supposed to go back and give her my card. So I turned around, I said, "Sorry to bother you again, but I'm gonna give you my business card. If you ever need to talk to somebody, give me a call, and I'll set you up with some lady who can help you." She said, "Okay." So I left. Didn't think another thing about it. You know, I felt that I had done what I was supposed to do. And about two weeks later, a longtime patient came into her office. Periodically, she's come over the years, and she was a young lady, too. And after my son adjusted her, she said she wanted to talk to me. So I said, "How can I help you?" She said, "My mom wants to thank you." I said, "Okay, why is that?" She says, "You remember that girl you talked to at the park, and you told her God loves her?" I said, "Yeah." She said, "That was my sister. She had been missing for two days. We knew she was suicidal. And after you talked to her, she came home, and she's getting help."
I've got one more. This is one more for you. All right, man. Let's finish strong. This guy I've known ever since preschool, and we're still friends today, though we've been in many arguments over the years. But when I first decided to run for City Council... Catch your breath, big fella. After... When I decided I was gonna run for City Council, he was one of the first ones in my corner, supporting me, even though I know that this isn't a life for me, a future for me in politics. He's been the biggest one of my year. This guy thinks I could be the President of the United States, but he's just a dear friend, always been an encouragement to me. And I just am so glad that I have this opportunity to give you an award tonight, my friend. My son calls him the Great White Buffalo. That's what he calls me. He says he's the Great White. But I'm glad to be giving this to you tonight, my friend. Thanks for coming. "On behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a Model Burlingtonian. You're one of the first to support and encourage me when I ran for City Council. Your friendship is appreciated and priceless. You help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On June 4th, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to my old friend, Corey Hill. Come on down." Great white. Bring it in, friend. Bring it in. What's going on here, guys? Don't worry. You know what? You have to say that yourself. This is for you. Let me get a picture taken with you. Thank you. Mr. Hill, please have a word. Said you could run for Senator, not President. That's why I love him.
Yep.
Corey Hill. All right. We'll do these two proclamations. Well, actually, if the Mayor's Awards, if you guys want to get on out of here, you're more than welcome to dip on out now. Thanks for coming down, guys. Appreciate that. Corey Hill. Okay, we've got some proclamations.
I have a proclamation here. Whereas the state of Texas made Juneteenth the first official African-American holiday in the United States in 1978, and whereas Juneteenth is the oldest African-American holiday observance, and whereas Juneteenth is synonymous with freedom and is observed nationally by many, and whereas the Burlington, Iowa branch of the NAACP is sponsoring the Juneteenth celebration in Burlington on Saturday, June 16th, 2018, at the Deedman and Gladys White Memorial Park, and whereas the theme for this Juneteenth celebration is "Get involved and make a difference. Let our voices be heard." And now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Saturday, June 16th, 2018, as Juneteenth Day in Burlington, and ask all of the citizens of Burlington to help celebrate this event. Signed and sealed this fourth day of June 2018 by Shane A. McCambe, Mayor.
Orlando Dial.
Are you causing trouble down there? Were you gonna say?
Would you like to say anything?
That was a nice move.
We certainly want to thank the city again for their support and cooperation. The celebration starts at 11:00 and runs through 4:00, and I believe it's our 21st or 22nd Juneteenth here in Burlington. So again, thank all the departments that help us and all the people who come by and support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Proclamation?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Burlington recognizes the 150-year-old fraternal organization of the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks, with the local lodge, Burlington Lodge Number 84, the oldest lodge in Iowa, to serve and inspire the people and its community with cherished principles of charity, justice, brotherly love, and fidelity. And whereas in 1907, the Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks officially designated June 14th as Flag Day. Then, in 1911, it was made mandatory for all lodges to observe Flag Day and honor the flag. And whereas in 1916, President Woodrow Wilson, an Elk member, issued the proclamation that created the official holiday we know as Flag Day. And whereas the congressional legislation designating June 14th as the National Flag Day was signed into law by President Harry Truman, also an Elk member, in 1949, the legislation also called upon the President to issue the Flag Day proclamation every year. And whereas the city of Burlington will observe June 14th, 2018, as National Flag Day, and the representation of the anniversary day upon which the flag of the United States was adopted by the Congress as the emblem of the Union. And whereas the city of Burlington will observe June 14th, 2018, as a day to recognize and to honor the most recognizable symbol of America, the Stars and Stripes, our American flag. And whereas it is fitting for the City Council and the citizens of Burlington, Iowa, to observe June 14th, 2018, as Flag Day, and pledge their allegiance
Day on June 9th, which is Saturday, at 11:00 at the Veterans, Mississippi Veterans Memorial.
to the flag, to our flag of the United States of America and the freedom of our country
And so we hope to see everybody there. And of course, we will be there to honor the flag
that our flag represents. And now, therefore, we as the City Council of the City of Burlington,
and give some history of our flag, and we'll have a 21-gun salute.
of Iowa, do hereby proclaim June 14th, 2018, as Flag Day. In this city of Burlington,
What time?
At 11:00. And I know that you came to the last one, Mayor McCambe, and I think
Iowa, signed and sealed this day, fourth day of June 2018, signed by Shane A. McCambe,
you had a great time, so...
I had a great time.
You did. You don't remember it, but it was a great time. So thank you so much.
Mayor.
Dana?
Our Elks Lodge is very proud to be part of this community. We've been here since 1888.
And next, we also have two, four, we have several Elks Lodge members with us tonight for a presentation, so present away.
Can we go this way?
Yeah, well, show everybody the numbers.
Wow.
The Burlington Elks Lodge Number 84 would like to present this chip to the Burlington firefighters for the amount of $4,637.31 to go toward the joint partnership of the smoke detector and the CO detectors program. This donation was made possible by an Elks grant and by an Elks breakfast that we had, and the mayor attended that, too.
And it was awesome.
Actually ate something.
It was awesome.
We've got the Purple Shirt Gang here tonight, and if anybody else would like to join the Elks, we're always looking for new members.
And Tommy is our exalted ruler.
You've got a good one.
Do you want to say?
Well, that's a lot. Smoke detectors.
Just on behalf of the Fire Department, we'd like to thank them. The biggest thing that we've had is, to date, we've had two fires, and of those fires, the smoke alarms that we installed, along with their help, alerted the people, and they got up and out of the house. So that alone is well worth it, and this is gonna help us to start installing more. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just want, we want to get a picture, but I just want to say it's groups like the Purple Gang. It is. I'm telling you guys, that was awesome. Man, they had Tommy Cook in at 2:00 in the morning. That was some good breakfast. I went back for seconds, but anyways, so appreciate you guys. Can you come up and let's get a picture taken with you, please?
Where do you want this?
I don't care.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
First time I've ever had a toddler in the house.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, sir.
Can I just say that the Fire Department, I appreciate your smoke detectors. I opened my door at lunch. I had a fire alarm going on. I called you guys, you guys... I didn't call 911, but you guys didn't even change my smoke detector. I said it was bad. It was like, oh, my God, how about a fire? That's true. Good job.
All right. Okay, this meeting is now adjourned. We appreciate everybody coming. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Item 1. Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. On the Consent Agenda tonight, we have the usual: finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have five resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving installation of hidden entrance sign in front of 1631 Agency Street for eastbound traffic. The third is a resolution approving an engineering services agreement between the city of Burlington and Feenster &amp; Kim, Inc. for sewer separation master planning. The fourth is a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Burlington and Nymaster Good PC for background research for sewer separation master planning. The fifth is a resolution approving the donation of the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers podium. We have two hearings set for June 18th. The first is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Central and Washington Bridge repairs. The second is consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Tom Wolfe for encroachment at the city right-of-way at 801 Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa. And Mayor Pro Tim, we have two appointments as well?
Yes. The first is the City Planning Commission for Chris Reed, and the second is the Zoning Board of Adjustment, and that would be Chad Palmer.
Okay. Thank you for your service, gentlemen. Is there anybody that would like to have any of these items removed from the Consent Agenda? I see none. Council?
No.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second.
Second.
Twice. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay. This is time set for hearing for consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Patterson Street Erosion Repair Project. Publication has been made. Mr. McGregor?
Good evening. The plans and specs in front of you, Eric will throw up on the monitor here, is for the Patterson Street repairs. In 2016, we had some severe rain events that caused issue in the past. We've also purchased property at the bottom of the hill, have since demoed the garage. The rationale behind it is that the cost of the overall project would be less than doing a retaining wall and/or a gabion wall. So you can see here the sloughing off that's been caused from the bottom side of Patterson Street. The road is currently still closed. It serves some houses around the corner, but there is another access point that they're able to use. It's just a little bit further around the corner. If you'd hit the next slide for me. So the plans and specs that is entailed is to go in and create a three-to-one slope. Just what we'll have to do is end up clearing and grubbing off some of the hillside, bringing dirt back in, clay, and then reforming the hillside. And if you'd hit the next slide, talk about the money. The project cost is estimated $85,000. Adding on the $35,000 for the purchase of the property, you're at $120,000. So, we had estimated over $150,000 for the other two options, so this one made the most sense. The funding source is road use tax, kind of a miscellaneous road fund. So we will get bids back sometime in mid-June, and then kind of have a tentative start and finish date on it. It's kind of this late in the construction season, giving a little bit of option on completion of this project should help people wanting to bid on it, should they get a little time in their schedule for other projects. So that's the thought behind that schedule.
Sounds good. Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Council?
I have none.
No. I move to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
You and I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2018 Patterson Street Erosion Repair Project.
Second?
Second.
Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay. Number two is consideration of plans and specifications for the 2018 Public Works Roof Replacement Project. Mr. McGregor?
This project here is redoing the roof on all of the Public Works facility. We have about 65,000 square foot of roof out there. This building was built in 2001 with a baliceted roof, where you can see a picture of it. It has rock on top of there to help keep the roof down. Over the last five years, we've noticed leaking, specifically in the office area. We do have, we've had notice leaking earlier out into the Bay Area. Wasn't really causing any problems, but now it is kind of traced into the inside where it's over above electrical and computer systems and stuff like that.
Right on.
So, if you'd hit the next slide for me. The estimate is a $270,000 project. We're gonna use TCP. It's a rubberized material that you'll adhere to the roof. The funding sources for this is road use tax and sewer fund money, because that's what it facilitates out there. We will do the same kind of schedule as... No, we won't. We will receive bids back on the 19th, but the construction will be mid-June, July. This is a fiscal 19-year project, so we won't start until after July 1st, and hopefully get done sometime this fall.
Thank you, sir. Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. That's all.
I move to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
You and I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2018 Public Works Roof Replacement Project.
Second?
Second.
Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay. Number two is consideration of plans and specifications for the 2018 Public Works Roof Replacement Project. Mr. McGregor?
This project here is redoing the roof on all of the Public Works facility. We have about 65,000 square foot of roof out there. This building was built in 2001 with a baliceted roof, where you can see a picture of it. It has rock on top of there to help keep the roof down. Over the last five years, we've noticed leaking, specifically in the office area. We do have, we've had notice leaking earlier out into the Bay Area. Wasn't really causing any problems, but now it is kind of traced into the inside where it's over above electrical and computer systems and stuff like that.
Right on.
So, if you'd hit the next slide for me. The estimate is a $270,000 project. We're gonna use TCP. It's a rubberized material that you'll adhere to the roof. The funding sources for this is road use tax and sewer fund money, because that's what it facilitates out there. We will do the same kind of schedule as... No, we won't. We will receive bids back on the 19th, but the construction will be mid-June, July. This is a fiscal 19-year project, so we won't start until after July 1st, and hopefully get done sometime this fall.
Thank you, sir. Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. That's all.
I move to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
You and I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2018 Public Works Roof Replacement Project.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Well done. Number three, consideration of plans and specifications for the 2018 1106 Washington Street Drainage Improvements. Mr. McGregor?
The plans and specs before you is the former Dress Rand site that the city currently owns. We've done some cleanup where the concrete was. In doing that, there is some drainage issues that are caused on the southwest section of the tracks. This project would entail running some drainage and then piping it into the box sewer that's immediately adjacent to the drainage area. If you'd hit the next, I don't remember what the... $25,000-ish for an estimate, $24,580. This would be a sewer-funded project. This one has a tentative timeline on it as well, where we receive bids back in June 19th, and then hopefully start sometime in July. We want to get it done sometime this fall, but it's not a very large project in scope. We also will run into some issues with how much moisture we have, because if you've noticed down there, anytime we get a couple-inch rain, it sits there for quite some time. So that's what we're hoping to try and fix with this.
Thank you, sir.
Sounds good.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Council?
I'm good.
I have none.
I move to close.
My only question was, in the future, we discussed putting some type of park or some type of facility in this area. This isn't something we're gonna have to tear out or work on at that time, is it?
Hang on a second, Matt.
Give some real-time play-by-play on my way up. It'll be a grate of some fashion, so it would be around the park. It shouldn't be an issue to try and remove that.
Okay.
I mean, unless you're gonna build some sort of structure immediately over top of that line, then you'd have to talk about moving that, but I don't think that's been in the discussion.
Satisfied, councilor?
Yep.
Okay. I move to close.
Second.
Kathleen, just close it out.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
You and I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2018 110 ... Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2018 1106 Washington Street Drainage Improvements.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote on it.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay. Ordinances.
All right, Your Honor, I have a motion for the final adoption of the ordinance creating Chapter 163A Junk Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Mr. Tisland?
No changes from the previous two readings. This essentially is pulling it out of Chapter 163 into its own chapter for junk vehicles. It clearly lays out the abatement process, which wasn't defined under the nuisance code, but it is not a new code as far as the ability to enforce junk vehicles as nuisance vehicles. It's just creating a clearer path for, for that process and what's defined as a junk vehicle versus under the old code, it was just a couple of sentences and not always real clear for the owners of vehicles or staff on the best route to deal with them. So, this better lays that out for everyone.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
None.
Good.
Go ahead.
Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the second reading of the ordinance repealing Chapter 122 Peddlers, Solicitors and Transit Merchants and creating a new chapter, 122 Peddlers, Solicitors and Mobile Food Vendors and Transit Merchants.
Second.
Mr. Tisland?
So, this adds in mobile food vendors to our existing code. We generally run those under peddlers, but there's a little difference between them and wanted to have a definition in the code on what defines and what is a mobile food vendor and also the frequency with which they apply. They're having to fill out a full application review by staff every time. And this code allows for one primary application or license issued each year and then site plan submitted after that instead of the full application.
Sounds good to me. Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
None. We've discussed it over.
Peddlers. Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Resolutions.
Resolutions, thanks. Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the final plat of the 16th edition of Flintridge Business Park subdivision.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Tisland?
This is a one-lot subdivision just to the east of the existing Burlington Recplex. This is the location for the indoor recreation facility, looking at with the extension of Broadway Street, or the street connecting from Broadway to West Burlington Avenue being shown here in yellow and then the one-lot created here in red. It's approximately a 7.88 acre lot, and Lot A would be reserved for future street right-of-way that the city had discussed constructing, connecting West Burlington Avenue over to Broadway.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
None.
None here.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Mount Pleasant Street Bridge Project.
Second.
Mr. McGregor?
Good evening again. The resolution in front of you will award contract for the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge Project. This project was bid differently than a lot of our local projects. It was, it was let through the Iowa Department of Transportation. They, they let this in mid-May, and so what will happen now is upon approval of this resolution, we'll send back correspondence to the DOT and they will forward contract language to us to then execute. Kramer and Associates was the low bid at $4,086,438.67, and the engineer's estimate was $4.3 million. So, we're happy to see something come under bid like that, and staff recommends approval. And so, what happens is we'll have the contract language go, go back and forth, and then you should see something firing up hopefully early July. And then this project is expected to take about a year.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
We've been through it.
Kathleen, let's do this.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
All right. Counselor, you've been hanging tough. Good job. All right, we've come to the end. This is where we will entertain comments from the audience. Is there one?
I have one.
Okay.
Again. I'm Kathleen John. I live at 2604 Plano's Drive, and I was very disappointed that I read this again in the paper. I was nervous last time when I was here, so I'm not so much now. 61% voted no, but that's not really an accurate account because not everyone got a survey. You spent the money on the survey and now you're still talking about it? I've had at least five people ask me in the last week because I was pointed out in the Hawkeye that I ran and went, but no one wants it. I mean, not no one, but there's plenty of people that said no. So, why did you spend the money on the survey and then ignore it? That's my question. There's three new council members. Next time, there might be two or three or whoever's spots open. You have to stop spending our money. I want to know, and a lot of people that I work with or I see in the street, want to know why you're still talking about it when we said no. Anybody answer?
Well, unfortunately.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, so we can't answer. But if you can come to the work session, you might, you might get a little more information of that. That's going to be one day.
Okay. And when is that?
Next Monday, 4:30.
I'll write it down.
All right.
But I'm going to say this again, stop spending our money. Thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Anybody else?
No.
Erica and Taria, 907 High Street. And just a couple of things. One is that I agree with her in terms of the, in terms of the spending. And the, and the problem isn't the $2.50. The problem is that it's $2.50 for the garbage. It's 9% on the water. It's a reassessment of the properties. It's property tax. It's the state income tax. It's the federal income tax. It's social security tax. It's the school district tax. It's the, it's the community college tax. Everybody thinks that they're just taking a little bit, but all, there's so many taxing entities today that, that everybody takes a little bit and thinks it's a little bit and it turns out to be a huge amount. And, and it's just out of control. It, it's crazy, the amount of tax. It's about 68% of all income earned going to taxes today. So, that's, that's just crazy and it has, has to stop. So, close that issue. Other thing I wanted to ask, it seemed like the, I got a lot of comments over the last couple of weeks about the flood wall, and I don't know how long it takes to put those up and take them down, but it seems like they went up and they stayed up. And I don't know how, I don't know how difficult to process that is, but I got a lot of negative comments about the way that the riverfront looked. We had a lot of people who were in town visiting over the last couple of weeks, and they said, oh, you came to see the river and it looks terrible. I kind of thought, my impression was that these things could go up and then rather easily come back down, but that doesn't seem to be the case. So, I kind of just wanted to throw that out there, that, that people would kind of like to know how, when these things go up, how long are they going to be up, and what should our expectation be about the way that the riverfront looks?
Thank you.
The flood panels, the flood panels have gone up as part of the contract with S&amp;G Construction. There still are some sections that are missing some panels. It's a contractual obligation that they install it to the full-fledged of this. The construction project is not done, so you will see that wall remaining until that project is closed out. Following the conclusion of that contract, our staff will label them and put them away accordingly to the way that we would have to reassemble them on the way back out. There are sections that would have to go out first. Unless there is a flood, those panels will not be in there. So, the reason why you see them up now and they'll remain up through the end of the contract, which will probably be until July, is because of that contractual obligation. We want to know that the wall that we're installing is going to be, one, meet specifications, and, two, will hold up against a flood. So, that's the reason why you see it remain in place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, concerns, comments? Anything else from the audience? Just me? How you doing?
Good. Tammy Thomas, and I too am not for the change in the garbage collection. I don't want one of the big garbage cans sitting around. I have one little bag. My mom recycles everything. I recycle. I think it's going to discourage people from recycling, and I think that's not a good thing. Who's paying for these garbage cans? And if they get broke, do we, does a customer have to pay for a new one? I'm sure they're more expensive than a regular garbage can. I mean, the reason I quit putting garbage cans out and just sat my bag out every morning because I come home from work, my garbage cans in the street, in the street or in the alley, run over by cars. I got tired of replacing my garbage cans all the time. I mean, I understand, I don't know if the garbage men didn't think that they had to lift 50-pound bags of garbage every day. And is, I mean, I read one article about that they were having too many complaints that they were having claims of injuries and stuff like that. So, I mean, I think they knew what their job was when they signed up for it, but, so I'm totally against the new garbage program, so just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Okay. You guys have been wonderful tonight. Want you to know that, especially you.
Thank you.
Just, no, I'm not. Especially you. All right. Mr. Tisland?
No.
Kathleen? Just good to see you tonight.
Thank you.
Counselor, over in England. We'll let you get out of here. Any comments?
Nope. Nothing. I'll be back next week, so we'll see you guys then.
All right. Have a good time and come back safe.
Yep. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you. Counselor?
Well, I'm going to just say, I went through, recently went through the rental improvement or approval process, and I gotta, I gotta admit, it was pretty pain, pain-free, so nice job to the development department. It was really easy to do. It wasn't complicated at all. They were accommodating and a lot of information, so just a good job by staff all around.
All right. Just want to say congratulations to the class of 2018. Seems like just yesterday, me and Stephanie were graduating. Well, actually, she was a couple of years behind me. But anyways, it's a great time in your life. I just encourage everybody to enjoy the summer. Us old folks, we can't go back and do it over again, and I wouldn't if I could, but all of you young kids, I hope you enjoy your summer, but congratulations on, on your first achievement. Also, to the Elks Club, I just want to give another big thank you to the Purple Team. They're, the Purple Gang, they're just phenomenal. They did a fantastic job, and they raised almost $5,000 selling breakfast. That was just phenomenal, so just want to say thank you to them again. And for all the downtown Burlington business owners, you guys are making Burlington happen, and I'm just excited. Every time I drive downtown Burlington, even on the weekends, it's going on, so just good to see that stuff. Just going to keep on, keep on pushing forward. Mayor Pro Tim, do you have some words for us tonight?
Of course. So, I hope everyone's got, had a chance to go down to the farmer's market every Thursday, and it's a, it's a great time. More and more produce and other vendors are showing up, so don't forget this Thursday, 4:30 to 7:30. Get down there and show your support. And then, of course, the Bees are in town this week, for most of this week. So, got to make out to there and watch some games. Most of their games start at 6:30, so weather should be good. And that's all that I have.
All right. Point guard.